Call the meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I have a couple of changes to the agenda. Under item five, a new item five C, under New Business, will be approval of the termination agreement with the county administrator. Item seven B will be removed from the agenda and added at a later date. And then, under item thirteen, the calendar, I have a new item E, which is to schedule a public hearing to establish the reassessment appeals process. And it's proposed that we do that also on the January twenty-eighth meeting.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? Okay. And then also, under calendar item number thirteen, item F would be to cancel the special exception nineteen dot one for the applicant Kenny Dotson. Are we scheduling that or are we just, are we going to take action on that?
The calendar item will be to cancel that public hearing at the request of the applicant who is withdrawn.
Okay.
It was previously tabled for the public hearing to take place on January fourteenth.
Okay. Okay. All right. Any other changes or additions to the agenda?
Motion to approve as modified.
Okay. Motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Special presentations and appearances. Presentation of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, better known as the CAFRA. Ms. Hedrick and company.
Good evening. I'm happy to have Andrea Nichols here with me this evening. Andrea is an audit manager and she was really the one overseeing the audit this year. So if you have any questions, you can direct them to Andrea. But we have issued an unmodified opinion on the county's comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. And as you know, an unmodified opinion is a clean opinion. It's really the best opinion that we can give as auditors. The other reports that we have issued are located in the back of the CAFRA in the complaint section. And the first one is our report on internal control of the financial reporting and compliance. We only had one finding this year that was worthy of being reported back there, and it related to an audit adjustment for schools. And then the second report relates to our audit of the county's major federal programs. And that report was clean as well. So, great job. I know, I believe this is our fourth audit that we've done for the county, and this was the best that it has gone from start to finish. Because as you know, we audit the schools, we audit social services, and we audit county finances. And we worked really well with everybody, and the audit just went very smoothly. And I think it's reflected in our audit results this year. Just as a reminder, if you want to look at a financial summary of the fiscal year, you might want to refer to the management's discussion analysis at the beginning of the CAFRA. And then in the back of the CAFRA, in the statistical section, is some good historical ten-year trend information. And that's always fun to kind of look back at and see how numbers have changed this year compared to ten years, ten years ago. You also have copies of our management letter. We reported one immaterial compliance finding there. This year, we decided to take a deeper dive into the information technology department. And again, I'm happy to say, we brought in our IT specialists this year, and they did not identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses as it relates, as IT relates to our financial statements. So that was great. But they did have some suggestions about policies and procedures and just formalizing some of those. So that's just kind of food for thought and suggestions from our specialists that are a part of our team. The management letter also describes some upcoming pending GASB pronouncements that we will work with the finance department on making sure that we are planning for those and we know how to implement them. And one of the big ones is related to leases and just making sure that we have an inventory of those leases when we have to implement the new reporting requirements.
Is there a big jerk around on that lease reporting?
The biggest ish, the biggest distinction or the biggest change for local governments is that we no longer are going to have capital versus operating leases. And we're now going to have to report an asset, a right-to-use asset on the books that we haven't had to use to report before, and then an offsetting liability. So. But you also have copies of our report to the Board of Supervisors, which describes certain matters that were required by professional standards to communicate to you, like your significant estimates. There's some numbers in here that we know are estimates, your estimated lives of capital assets, for instance, your pension and OPEB liabilities. And so it's just to remind you that those numbers are estimates. We have very few audit adjustments, which is wonderful. Again, it shows that the audit went clean. It was very clean this year. So, are there any questions for me or Andrea?
I have a question actually going forward, not so much this past year's audit, but this is a reassessment year. Are there things that you will need or need to, that we need to be aware of in terms of the applying those reassessment numbers to the process? Or is that, is that something you just observed as it is done in the normal course of business?
We really just observe that, but we start our work with the Commissioner of Revenue's Office, and we take those assessments, and then we actually recalculate based on the county's tax rate and compare that into Treasurer's collection. So we're kind of looking at Commissioner of Revenue, Treasurer's Office, and Finance reporting and just making sure that the numbers appear reasonable.
Okay. Any other questions? Well?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just want to recognize Sarah Keeler and certainly Glenda. As was said, this was the fourth audit with her PV mares, and it was the best ever. It was Sarah's first, and so I think the two reflect each other's hard work. So, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. She did work really, really hard to be ready for us. So that's another reason why the audit went quickly. So. And we appreciate the opportunity to serve the county as your auditors.
Thank you. Thanks, Glenn. Thanks, Sarah. Okay. Consent agenda. Any questions? Have a motion? Okay. Second? Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. New business. You have in your packet constitutional officer agreements for the year. Ms. Simpson, you going to make a few comments about that?
Sure. I'll keep it brief. In your packet, you have constitutional officer agreements, which is what we lovingly refer to them as, with the Commissioner of the Revenue, the Sheriff, and the Treasurer. As you know, these are agreements between the constitutional officers and the Board of Supervisors that govern use of our personnel policy manual for employees of the constitutional officers. So there are three in front of you tonight for your consideration. They've already been reviewed and approved by the listed constitutional officers, and there were no requested changes this year. So all of these agreements are consistent with the agreements currently in place. This would just extend the agreements for the additional four-year term of the service of the constitutional officer. I do want to note, we're still communicating with the Commonwealth's Attorney regarding her agreement, and there is an additional agreement regarding the Sheriff's supervision of our animal control function, which I plan to present to you at meetings early next year. So tonight, what we're looking for action on is just approval of the agreements with the Commissioner, Sheriff, and Treasurer, authorizing the chairman to execute those agreements, and the county administrator to attest those agreements.
So moved. Second. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passage unanimously. All right. Under New Business also, item five B, resolution to appoint the Board of Equalization and establish their compensation. Ms. Simpson, again.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and in front of you is a resolution to appoint the Board of Equalization. You'll recognize the names listed there of the representatives that each of you recommended for appointment. This resolution also establishes compensation for the Board of Equalization, which is consistent with the compensation that was offered the last reassessment cycle four years ago. What I'm looking for this evening is just a motion to adopt the resolution, appointing or making recommendation to appoint these individuals, establishing the hourly compensation, and to let you know that the order has been sent to the Circuit Court to begin the formal appointment of these members by the Circuit Court judge.
Our action is to recommend to the Circuit Court. Circuit Court actually does the appointments.
Yes, sir. That is correct. And then when we're notified of their appointment, each member will go to the Circuit Court to be sworn in for their, their term.
Okay. Second. Have a motion in the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item five C, approval of the termination agreement with the county administrator. County attorney has prepared that agreement, and I need a motion to execute that agreement. Have a motion in the second. Second. Okay. Have a motion in the second. Any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. No old business. Department Director, Constitutional Officer Report.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt, but pursuant to state law, there are some severance provisions that you want to announce. Those are seen in the article. I've got it right here.
If you want to identify them, go ahead.
Yeah. It simply, the severance agreement calls for an eleven-month salary severance package and all corresponding benefits as cited with that pursuant to state law.
And that was per the employment agreement with the county administrator?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right. Department Director, Constitutional Officer Reports. The annual operating capital budget preparation forecast. Ms. Bradley, want to make any comments about that? Or if so, come on up.
In your agenda package is a forecast basically of the revenues that we're projecting at this point for fiscal year twenty-one. As you know, we're about to start the budget process for that fiscal year. Department will request due in at the end of this month. But this is just to sort of give you an overall idea of where we are, and it's good time, good timing with the release of the CAFRA because we now know what our fund balance was for sure at June thirtieth. And we know that we had approximately four million dollars over the eighteen percent that we need to keep in reserve per our policy. Some of the assumptions I used in looking through the revenues were a one percent increase in property values, plus I did an estimate for new construction. Now we know that the reassessment is really going to come into play. But as you know, in order to achieve new revenue above one percent, we would have to re-advertize the tax rate increase. Otherwise, we will roll the tax rate back to the equalized rate. I used one point two percent for personal property taxes, four point two for other local taxes. And you can see right down the list there. These percentages look a little strange because I did go line by line and look at the historical collections on each one. So these are sort of where the category totals ended up in terms of percentage increases or decreases. All in all, between the current year's budget for FY twenty and FY twenty-one, these estimates would indicate that we would have new revenue of about one point four million if, you know, at current levels. Current levels of fees and equalizing the tax rate after the reassessment. We did have a really good year for FY nineteen. I just want to point out that our expenditures came in in the general fund, three point three million under the revised budget. That seems like a lot. But of that amount, one point one million was the remaining school, local school appropriation. Two hundred and fifty-three was a remaining local appropriation from the Department of Social Services. And six hundred and forty thousand dollars of that amount was then re-appropriated in FY twenty-one. So it starts to kind of whittle that down to a more reasonable amount. There were some departments that had a relatively significant amount of savings, and mainly due to turnover. For instance, the Sheriff's Office, Fire and EMS, the Animal Shelter, and the ECC all had some turnover during the year, which created some savings. There is included in your agenda package tonight, the quarterly report for the first quarter of the current fiscal year. That will be another source for you to sort of, sort of gauge what our financial position is at this time. And I've also worked up a list of known factors, which include revenues and expenditures, that I've been over with the Budget Committee. And they include things like the opening of the new public safety facility, because obviously that's going to require heating and cooling and all of the things that go with the operation of a building. We have the proposed CIP, so I've used numbers that have come out of that. And there's about a million dollars, I think, in new debt proposed in the CIP as it is proposed now. It's not yet adopted. But those are some of the key factors that I think will be things that we need to wrestle with when we come to put the FY twenty-one budget together. Are there any questions? Or if there's any guidance that the board would want to offer the staff as we, you know, go forward in looking at the FY twenty-one budget, I would welcome the opportunity to hear it.
I guess one thing the board could do is either through motion or just discussion, the monies for the broadband authority that were requested to be reserved, and I say that in quotes because it's really not a, not a direct appropriation at this point. You've identified the fund balance here, and I take it that that request would go against that fund balance in all likelihood. Is that your plan?
Right. It would be part of the four million dollars. So we basically take that one and a half and earmark it for the broadband authority and then not actually appropriate a transfer to the broadband authority until we know what those costs are.
Right. So, anybody?
That uses up with the, with the other things you've, remaining school and everything else, that uses up almost the entire four million.
Well, the, the four million is actually after this.
It's a net of all of those. That's after the adjustments.
Yeah. So it would, it would take a piece of it, a big piece of it.
Okay.
So are you looking for a motion?
Yeah. Let's do a motion so we communicate with her, her wishes on.
I would make the motion that we put those funds in, in reserve to go to the broadband authority and appropriation.
Have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Good. Thank you. County attorneys' report? Okay. County administrators' report?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any board comment at this time? Okay. Any questions on the information items? The quarterly report is Glenda referred to in your packet. All right. Any appointments tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to appoint Dandy Oliver to the Youth Commission and appoint Mr. Sedwick and Mr. Weiner to the Board of affiliate code appeals.
Okay. And I would also like to appoint Mr. Sedwick to the Airport Board, recognizing that he is now a resident of a different district, but he served on that board for quite some time. And I think my understanding is, has been a significant contributor. So I think his continuation would be in order, and he says he's willing to do it. Okay. Any other appointments? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. Calendar. We had two additions there. Any other questions on the calendar items? We have public hearings for the twenty-eighth scheduled. There's four of them, five of them actually, I guess. And then on the fourteenth, we would, or I guess tonight, we could actually cancel the one on the fourteenth for the special exception. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So we'd need, we probably need a motion on that.
I mentioned the public hearings for the, that on item D is, we do the announcement such that we get both the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors the same announcement because of some delays we had in getting the thing into the system.
Okay. Are you aware of that? We want to do a?
I don't know that we'll have to advertise on the same ad, but the Planning Commission is set to have their public hearing at the beginning of January. And then your action this evening would authorize me to send the ads for your January twenty-eighth.
Okay. All right. That's fine.
But yes, they'll be occurring.
Okay. That's fine.
And I've already, I've advised, I advise in the Planning Commission that we're double advertising this.
Oh, okay.
Yes. So there might be some overlap.
Okay. Good.
I would move that we cancel thirteen F per the applicant's request.
Okay. Cancel special exception nineteen dash one. Okay.
Did you get the approvals on the others? Or did I miss it?
One, one motion can accomplish all of them if you want.
You want to finish making the motion to schedule the public hearings? We'll do one motion.
And I would continue my motion to schedule those three, four public hearings.
A second.
I think it's actually five public hearings.
Five public hearings, okay.
And one cancellation.
And one cancellation. Right. Okay. And you second that motion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We have that. Okay. Next item on our agenda is public comment. I guess I'll ask the county attorney if we, we're not quite at five thirty yet. Do you think we can start? All right. Let's do that. All right. Okay. In the public comment period, before we start, just a couple of reminders. We, this, as with all of our meetings, we make a video of this, so I ask you to please, when you come up to the lectern there, please identify yourself, your full name, and your address. Try to speak directly into the microphone so that we get a complete recording of that. Public comment, generally, three minutes is allowed. There'll be a timer. When you hear the timer, try to, try to wrap it up if you would please. Hopefully, most of you have signed up for, to speak. Anybody that hasn't signed up and would like to, I invite you to see staff out, out in the hallway there. I'll give you a minute to do that if you, if you want, so that we have a record of your participation. Anybody need to sign up? Okay. All right. First speaker.
Yes, sir. First speaker is Denise Lor, one six six four nine Mountain Track Road.
Okay.
Thank you for having me. Thank the board for hearing me. My name is Denise Lor, and I live at one six six four nine Mountain Track Road. I would like to thank you for acknowledging us as a Second Amendment Sanctuary County at the last board meeting, which I did attend. I know that you all have probably received some accolades for having that, as well as some heat for having that decision that you had for that meeting. But I would like to tell you, thank you for seeing that through. I know a lot of that has been said that it's just on paper, but coming from a mother of five children, I would like to say thank you, even if it is on paper. I am a woman that drives her own motorcycle. I am a concealed carry permit carry person. And so whenever I'm on my motorcycle by myself, it kind of levels my playing field, as you can say. So when we're looking at these new laws that may be going into effect, it puts me in a position that it would have me considered a felon for the pistol that I carry. And I have a difficult time with that. I have went by all the laws to get that concealed carry permit. I have went through a hundredth education course with my two sons when they were getting their hunting license. We don't disobey the laws. We go by all the laws. And I'm very sorry for all of the mass shootings that happened, but it's very difficult for me to sit back and watch as the good people are held accountable for the bad things that happen. Timothy McVeigh took a truck and filled it with fertilizer and exploded a building. You can't take away all of the trucks. You can't take away the fertilizer. But you're wanting to sit here and punish good people for the guns that bad people are doing. And I just took a statistic. Now, this is England, but last year was their highest killing by knife and sharp instrument since they started taking record in nineteen forty-six. So it's bad people doing bad things. And it's not the guns. It's the people. And you need to remember that. So thank you again for taking and making this a Second Amendment Sanctuary County.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Terry Anderson, two three one nine nine Monrovia Road.
Good evening. Thank you for offering me an opportunity to speak. I am a retired four-year resident of Orange County. I'm also an ex-marine staff sergeant and Vietnam veteran and a gun owner. I am not here, I am, by the way, the chair of the Democratic Party of Orange County. I'm not here to represent the Democratic Party or Democrats in general. I am here instead to try to speak for those many people who feel that last month's resolution did not give us a fair chance to express our opinions, and that the way in which it was done, not just the content, is not who we are. A large crowd doesn't make a democracy. It is clear from the many, many polls that were done over the last election year that some seventy to eighty percent of Virginians, including this county and including a majority of Republicans, favor some gun control measures. I don't want to argue the pros and cons of that. That is simply a fact. I know that the board was very careful in the language. I know that the board was very careful in the language that it used and the resolution that it adopted. Mr. White and I had a long conversation in which he expressed your, your views and your care. Despite your care, it is clear that that resolution is being taken and represented as a victory for those who oppose any gun legislation at all. It lumps us in with all the other counties that have passed various forms of an anti-gun legislation resolution. We don't think that represents us, and we would like you to consider a follow-up resolution, which I have given you copies of, and I will read very briefly. Be it resolved by the Orange County Virginia Board of Supervisors that this board recognizes that no single right granted by our Constitution outweighs another, that each must be viewed in balance with all others, and that balance is struck within our legislative and court systems and nowhere else. Above all is the unalienable right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness stated in our Declaration of Independence. When the assertion of any constitutional right threatens that unalienable first right, reasonable regulation is justified and necessary. Our right to free speech, freedom of the press, and freedom of religion have all been justly limited by our courts, slander and libel laws threatening speech, the supremacy of secular laws over individual religious beliefs. We recognize that limitations on the Second Amendment are a highly controversial matter. We also recognize that 70 to 80 percent of Virginians have indicated a desire for sensible gun safety measures. It is up to our legislature and courts to decide what measures are appropriate and constitutional. After that process is done, our duty is clear. We have sworn to uphold the law and constitutions of Virginia and the United States, and we shall do so. I ask the board to consider that resolution in an effort to more fairly represent the variety of opinion in this county.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Alfred Neeny, 7542 Hawthorne Drive.
Thank you. Again, my name is Alfred Neeny, 7542 Hawthorne Drive, Rapidan. I'm a gun owner, and I support the right to have my guns. At the same time, I believe in a higher rule, the rule of law, and I think establishing this sanctuary against this potential legislation is not the right way to go. It kind of sets this board and other boards across this state above our state legislature. They pass the laws, we're supposed to, and you, and all of us are supposed to support them. If we don't like the laws, we elect different people, we change the laws. But I think it's a dangerous precedent to establish sanctuary for any law that we don't like before the state has actually passed it, and which means other things can come up, and this board will be asked to approve other things that they're going to avoid and encourage citizens not to support future laws. And I think that goes against our democracy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Elaine Freeland, 118 Washington Street.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Elaine Freeland. I lived at Lake of the Woods. I first would like to read a statement from a neighbor who could not get to today's meeting. After that, I'll offer some personal comments. Helen writes, "I was at a food line recently. As I looked down at the food displays, displays of various meats, I saw a man with an open carry gun on his waist. I did not think of how he made me feel safe. I wondered if he had any gun safety training. I thought about smiling at him, because if I didn't, he might think I meant harm, and then he would shoot me. In other words, his gun scared me a lot. I have been in many scary situations, but the ones, this one really bothered me. How is his right to carry more important or valid than my right to feel safe? I ask you, should we feel more safe with the Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution passed by a majority of the board two weeks ago? Hardly. Does the board need to be reminded that the lawmaking process ensures constitutionality is inherent in all state legislation that's passed? If there is a constitutional question of merit, it's settled by the courts. In Orange County, we are now left with a label of a community that wishes to defy laws that are not passed yet, and the label of a community where residents feel their families are not safe. Who would want to visit, live, or start a business in a community with these labels? I ask you to rescind the Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution and choose to fulfill your responsibility to Orange County to make it safe as you work hand in hand with law enforcement and elected officials who stand up for gun safety. Common sense gun safety is necessary as a step toward deterring those who wish to harm themselves or others or in reducing accidental shootings. I ask you to adopt the resolution proposed by Terry Anderson, recognizing that no single right guaranteed by our Constitution outweighs another, that rights must be viewed in balance, and that balance is struck within our legislation and court systems. Thank you very much."
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tracy Loflin, 7174 Rapidan Road.
My name is Tracy Loflin from Rapidan. I'll be brief and let y'all get your dinner. I just wanted to say that I, that while I appreciate that some board members initially tried to resist passing a Second Amendment resolution at the December 3rd meeting, and while I understand that a resolution of this kind is symbolic, really, in your interests and the interests that you've professed is your responsibility when I've stood before this board before, it's not, a resolution of this kind is not good for business, and it's not good for tourism, and in fact, it's a stain on our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Joanne Speeden, 12046 Blue Hill Drive.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. I'd like to speak to the board's passing of the Sanctuary City Resolution for the Second Amendment. Because the board decided to pass this resolution about a controversial issue without input from the entire community, I thought it would be important to provide some additional input. I realize that this resolution has no legal bearing because of the structure of straight law. However, it is concerning that the board would pass a resolution in order to satisfy a group that was organized from outside the county instead of taking the issue to all county citizens. I'd like to discuss the concept of rights. The fact is, all rights have restrictions. This is because rights are often in conflict with other rights, and it is one of the major roles of governance to determine which of conflicting rights have priority. There's the famous adage that "my right to extend my fist ends where your face begins." There are limitations on free speech. You can't yell "fire" in a crowded movie theater. You can't slander. Even on the local level, zoning ordinances are restrictions on rights because someone's use of their personal property can affect another's personal property. So why, when it comes to the Second Amendment, all of a sudden, there can be no restrictions? What about the right of a five-year-old to be free from fear instead of cowering, crying in their darkened classroom during an active shooter drill? I thought it rather ironic that in the agenda for the last Board of Supervisor meeting, there was a note at the bottom in large red print that said that the meeting would be moved to another larger location. This told me that the board knew that this matter was going to occur, and it also said in the note that weapons would not be allowed in the school. This tells me that indeed, there are acceptable limitations to the Second Amendment. Otherwise, you could not prohibit weapons in schools. So what needs to take place is a discussion of what common sense regulations are reasonable to protect all rights, not just one set of rights. Thank you.
Next speaker is Bill Speeden, 12046 Blue Hill Drive.
You might recognize the address. It's the same as the previous one. I'm 12046 Blue Hill Drive. So if I'm going to get dinner tonight, I better agree with the previous speaker. I grew up in the county hunting. I have a concealed weapon permit, and I've brought up my offspring to be proficient and responsible firearm users. I do not feel threatened by a false sense of "they want to take my guns away" syndrome. Gentlemen, I cannot improve or better define the problems our society faces with interpretations of the Second Amendment, which I'm sure you're aware. I understand the pressure of a large turnout on an issue. Mob rule is sometimes the driving force behind a less improper decision-making process. My sentiment on the recent resolution cannot be better expressed than those expressed by other citizens the night before me and maybe some after. Who knows? Be careful, gentlemen. The way your last meeting involved denied the general public access to the subject matter minimizing open governance and justifying the means decision-making process is not conducive to good and open decision-making. Our society, from its historical background, has to develop the Rambo complex, where we tend to have fantasies of overcoming gun-related threats. Every year in this country, gun-related civilian deaths outnumber the total Americans killed 20 years in Afghanistan. Resulting mob rule, however difficult, resisting mob rule, however difficult, is a sign of leadership standing between potential harmful decisions, in this case, threats to public safety, and respecting all rights given us in the Constitution. However, I do not feel the need to possess the capability to kill nine people in 30 seconds, which deny those nine, as in Pittsburgh recently, reasonable projections to thousands a year in this country, their right to live in a society protecting their health, safety, and welfare. We should not interfere with reasonable and responsible containment for the acquisition of firearms, such as background checks, bump stocks, magazine limitations, buying gun parts on the internet to assemble your own weapon. I support recognition and protection of all our rights. Thank you.
Next speaker is Sandra Smith.
Thank you very much. My name is Sandra Smith. I live at 208 Duke Street, Gordonsville, Virginia. I've lived here in Virginia since 2005, and it's a lovely, peaceful place to be. I own my own house. I pay taxes. I have a job here, and recently, I opened a business. When I heard about the Sanctuary County Resolution, my heart sank. I said to myself, this is not the place for me to have my business. For a minute, I wanted to move away, but then I decided, no, I'll just come and tell you how I feel, and I will agree with my friends and neighbors who have spoken up here, and hopefully, this will all be resolved. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Melody Ashley, 19551 Constitution Highway.
Hi. My name's Melody Ashley. I live at 19551 Constitution Highway. And first, I want to thank the board for allowing Orange County to become a Second Amendment County. Eighty-eight counties in the state of Virginia have already passed that resolution with only seven not, and of those seven, most of those actually have it on their agenda to become a Second Amendment county as well. So we're following suit with the rest of the state of Virginia. I'm not exactly sure where all of the statistics came from that we just heard on the polls, because it doesn't seem like the rest of Virginia is agreeing with the polls that we just talked about. And I don't think that anyone in this room at all would disagree that we need sensible gun laws. The problem, though, is that the gun laws that are currently being looked at on the board are not constitutional, and I think that's the big word that people forget, is that the Second Amendment county is so that, is just saying that we would not support an unconstitutional gun laws. Not that we're going to defy the laws, because everyone in here that's a gun owner is a legal citizen, and we don't want to be a not illegal citizen. So we would never carry, we, we, we don't want to become felons because we own a gun. And anyways, so there's, I had a speech prepared, and that wasn't part of it, but I'm going to go ahead and tell you what my speech was so that you can understand what I'm saying. "A well-regulated militia, being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms should not be infringed on." These are the words of the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution. That the founders would enshrine this amendment immediately after the First Amendment speak to its importance. This amendment is essential to the maintaining, the first, first, the free exercise of which we see all around us tonight. To reject the Second Amendment on factually tenuous fear-mongering opens the door to dismissing the First Amendment, and the very ideals of this great nation was founded upon. So if we are to start passing the laws, that some of, some of the things that have been presented actually have already gone to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court has ruled that they're unconstitutional and they infringe upon our rights. So some of the laws that Northbrook, Governor Northbrook, if I said his name right, is trying to pass, if you read them, they actually talk about banning some weapons, guns, that the Supreme Court has deemed as common weapons. And they said, according to the Supreme Court, they cannot ban those, you know, from legal owning citizens. So the laws that are trying to be passed is unconstitutional, and I think that's the reason that the people that are supporting the Second Amendment Sanctuary are here tonight is because of that, not because we don't want to have sensible laws. So I don't want anyone to, to get that misunderstanding. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is David Knighton, 12127 Greenwood Road.
I'm Reverend David Knighton. I live at 12127 Greenwood Road. I want to thank you for hearing all the people, both sides, whether you agree or disagree. And it's a, it's a very contentious issue, this Second Amendment resolution, but it is not a law. It's simply saying, hey, there's a majority of people here that kind of feel that this is going the wrong way. First of all, listening to everybody up here, this, I don't know where they get the figures from. I do not see that. When I see a map of Virginia, green has shown that they have passed these resolutions, and it is a sea of green, which means Virginia does not want this. Now, my question, and, and, you know, if you're talking to me personally, I don't have anything that's covered, but one thing, and that is with these red flag laws, and they're called by different names, they will simply take your and my due process away, period. I am guilty until considered innocent, if I can even get to a court. That is something I haven't heard addressed here. That is something that I will stand against. Now, when you live in the counties, you have a little bit more, I mean, I understand city folks, you don't need rifles and things because you live in apartment buildings. But when you live out in the field where coyotes come out, and we had a little problem at my house with coyotes, and my grandson is there. I've got seven coyotes standing out in the field. What am I supposed to do? The other day, actually, the last time he was at my house, he looks down and said, "Granddaddy, what kind of dog is that?" And I looked down at the creek, and it's a bear standing there. I'm going to need more than 10 bullets to stop a bear that weighs about 500 pounds. Of course, I've got sense enough to turn around and go back in the house, but had he been closer, I wouldn't have had a choice. Here's the deal. I'm, I'm not, you know, and I appreciate everybody's opinion. I do. As a pastor, I have to deal with a lot of different opinions, and I can't make anybody happy, no matter what I do. Okay? So I'm in your same shoes, but I do understand that it is important for us to say, hey, guys, listen, what they pass, I can't control. It will be settled in the courts, one way or the other. But I have been, I have seen it, that I have been threatened by the National Guard being called in to administer these laws for those that will not stand for it. I have also, this morning, whether or not it's true, and it's alleged at this time because I can't vet it... because I can't vet it, but it's so now that, my time's going off, but I will tell you, Northam is now threatening to cut off power and supplies. Now, I don't know if that's right or not, but if it is, that's a serious problem.
Okay, folks, hey.
Hey, come on, hey.
Excuse me.
Listen, we're going to, one speaker at a time, do everyone the courtesy of listening and giving them their time. Anyone in the, anyone in the audience who can't comply. Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Doc Garnett, resident of Rapidan.
Good evening, I'm Doc Garnett from Rapidan. I came principally tonight to thank you for passing the resolution. Those of you who know me might not be surprised if I were to suggest that it could have been stronger, but I appreciate what you did, and I think it took a lot of courage. It was not a mob who showed up, it was a quite orderly collection of citizens. I saw estimated, estimated in the paper, seven hundred and fifty, but I also talked to many people, and I was there, who thought the crowd was more like twelve hundred or fifteen hundred, almost twice as many, but the actual number doesn't matter. What matters is it was a very large collection of Orange County citizens from all walks of life, who came to support the idea that our Board of Supervisors would stand up for us who believe that the Constitution is paramount, not just the federal Constitution, but the Virginia Constitution, which supports the rights which we do not want to have unlawfully mitigated by legislation. Someone spoke about the hierarchy of laws, or words that, that earlier tonight, and he is correct, there is a hierarchy of laws. But just because the General Assembly passes some legislation, doesn't mean that that legislation is actually lawful, because as the gentleman said, there is a hierarchy of laws. Above the legislation, the Virginia statutes, is the Virginia Constitution, and above the Consta, the Virginia Constitution, or at least equal to it, is the federal Constitution. Which brings me to another comment made tonight, which is absolutely in error. The Constitution, the Bill of Rights, do not grant us rights. The Constitution does not grant our liberties, the Constitution acknowledges our liberties. The framers understood, and they said, and it's well-stated, well-documented, that they believed our rights come from God, from our Creator. I saw a letter in the paper which indicated, if I read it correctly, that that's inflammatory language. Well, I'm sorry that that, no, I'm not sorry. I'm sorry that that person perceives it as inflammatory language, but it is historically accurate, and traditionally accurate. Our rights come from our Creator. They do not come from the General Assembly, or Governor Northam, or the Constitution, and they are no ones to take away from us. So I'm starting to ramble now, so I'll just say again, thank you very much for passing that resolution, and for hearing the citizens' end.
Next speaker is Paul Moog, resident of Rhodesville.
Good evening Supervisors, I came here to thank you for passing the sanctuary resolution a couple weeks ago. I was really surprised, I put, for a little background, new to Orange, but twenty-five years ago or so, the last time the Democrats were empowered, they tried to push gun control down Virginia's throat, and I saw how ineffective the big national groups were, so I started a little group called Northern Virginia Citizens Defense League. Over the years, I turned it to Virginia Citizens Defense League, which is the group that's pushing the sanctuary movement. And I put out a call a couple weeks ago, and I thought maybe fifty people would show up, and I was amazed to see about a thousand people showed up, which is amazing, out of thirty-some thousand people, we got like one in thirty, and out of those thirty thousand, a lot of those are probably kids too. So I was really pleased to see how much grassroots support there is for gun rights in Orange. And I, you were in a tough spot, and you came through, I was glad I could help mitigate and get us into something where everybody could go home and feel good about themselves. But I am really, one reason I came out tonight is people saw the Democrats were doing an organized effort to come here and try to chastise you. I think it's a shame that a political party is working so hard to take away our rights. I think it is a shame, and the Democrats, I think it's going to be lucky if you can get elected dog catcher if you keep this up. Sorry about that, but it's getting me very angry that there's an organized effort to do this.
Address us, not.
I'm sorry about that. But I am, I do, will say to Democrats, I really think this is going to hurt your party. I don't know how the political affiliations on the Board, I can guess, but I think this is really going to hurt the Democrat Party. I think you've been fed, I was really pleased that the article that came out in the local newspaper was so accurate and real news for a change, I'd read so much fake news. I was really pleased with the local media, but I think in large, the media puts out a lot of propaganda, and these polls they push, they work with the Democrats to put out fake news, fake polls, that show the support for gun control. You know, you can put out a question that says, do you support reasonable gun control, or this, you want to tighten and keep criminals away from gun, and that doesn't translate into you want to turn everybody, you know, hundreds of thousands of people in Virginia into felons. So I thank you again, I encourage the Democrats to really look at what you're doing, and how you're hurting your party, and how you're hurting the people of Virginia. And, and I hope everybody who's in favor of gun rights comes to Richmond on January twentieth, where I keep fighting this, and we may come back to you folks and ask you to do something more concrete than a resolution down the road, but for now, we're just going to sit tight and fight in Richmond. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Nancy Mitchell.
Good evening, my name is Nancy Mitchell, and I live at seventeen four one four Constitution Highway. And I came here tonight, gentlemen, to thank you for passing the Second Amendment Sanctuary County. I appreciate those that voted for it, and I hope that people will take a definite look at this issue, because I came tonight so I could see your faces. I could not get into the meeting when they held it for the Sanctuary County several weeks ago, I understand. So thank you very much, my supervisor, and for those of you that did vote for it. I agree with the first speaker that it's an uneven playing field, when you're a woman out in public, and there are criminals out there that have guns, and you're a woman that doesn't. You don't have to be a woman, you could be anybody, you could be out there, and you are not protected. That is not the way we face reality. In real life, there are criminals, and you can't take away the guns from the criminals. So what is the effect if you take away the protection from the law-abiding citizens? They are your reinforcement, they are the ones that are there, that help good to be propagated. Someone said that the only way for evil to flourish is if the good people do nothing. So you take away their guns, and you have disarmed them, they are not capable. We do not use this kind of logic of taking away guns from law-abiding citizens when we have cars. We teach our children how to use cars responsibly, but some of them do not. And when they do not, we don't take the cars away from the people that are law-abiding citizens, we punish those that disobey the laws. There is no logic in disarming the people that want to obey, that want a peaceable county, or wherever they are. So I really appreciate those that have maintained my ability to have my Second Amendment right preserved. I guess that's it. Thank you very much, appreciate you for your time.
Next speaker is Paul Mitchell.
Hello, I'm Paul Mitchell, I live at seventeen four one four Constitution Highway, and that was my better half that just spoke. Some of the comments that was made here today are about businesses that may not want to come into this county because of this legislation, or this ordinance you just passed. I work for a company that has three hundred employees in this county, we're based out of Sacramento, California. We're shutting down that facility to move people here from Sacramento. They have the choice to come here. One of the reasons they come here, or one of the first questions I get is, where can I shoot? I'm from California, we were restricted. I want to be able to come here and, and use my Second Amendment rights, and to be able to target shoot. Out there, they've got a five-mile limit to be away from a house. Here, we have shooting ranges, and we have open areas that are safe for them to shoot, and they love it. And yes, some of them like to, like to build their own stuff, custom-make things. And yes, they buy stuff off the Internet and custom-fit together, so it actually put part of themselves into these guns, so they've, they've got just the perfect, the perfect range gun. And that was one of the, the inspirations for some of these people to actually move to Orange County. I actually feel a little upset at times, when I go to a facility that has one of those gun signs with an X in it, and the reason being is, the shooter in Colorado that went to the theater to do that mass murdering, he passed up three, two or three other theaters to find a theater that had that no guns implemented, because he knew he was not going to find resistance there. And he didn't. He was able to do what he wanted to do. So when I see these buildings that are marked that way, I'm going like, oh my goodness, this is where most people get killed in a mass shooting, is in a gun-free zone, and statistics show that. During the Sandy Hook shooting, I've got a daughter that has a master's degree in education. After that shooting, and she was a teacher in central Virginia area, her and several other teachers went to the principal and said, is there any training, is there any rules that we can carry a firearm in here? She is a concealed weapons holder, there were several other ones there also that happened. And they said, no, why? Because I don't want to be a human shield to protect these three third graders. I would rather have a fighting chance to defend these children, instead of backing up and saying, shoot me first, or getting behind a table. So there's some other things we really need to look at, and as another thought, the constitutional guarantees that we have isn't the guarantee that are to give us rights, it's to keep the government, it's to restrict them from, for putting undue stress on the citizens, it's not to let us know from, from the other way, that what we can and can't do is to stop the government from doing things to the citizens.
Your time expired.
Oh, okay, thank you very much.
Next speaker is Stephen Royce.
Good evening Board Supervisors, my name is Stephen Royce, I live at 11015 Rapidan Road. I'm in Teal District, the third district, and very happy to be there. I'm a little bit upset about the Second Amendment resolution that you wrote, and I don't think it's strong enough, and I'll tell you why in a minute, but we came here twenty-seven years ago, and absolutely fell in love with Orange County. We looked at Albemarle County, looked at quite a few counties in the area and across the South, and we settled in Orange County. We settled here to raise our family, which I've raised four kids here, put them through the high school, the entire educational system here, and, and super happy with everything that's taken place over the last twenty-seven years that we've been here. It just, it, it's a, it's fun to note that we bought a home on a farm that's been here for quite a few years. It was built by a man named George Taylor. He sent thirteen sons to the Revolutionary War, all of them survived, but they fought, and, and a lot of people died for the rights that we have today. Another gentleman that lived in that home at, at the time died at Gettysburg fighting for those rights, fighting for rights of, of citizens in Orange County, he was in the First Virginia Infantry, and, and never came home from Gettysburg. I spent some time downrange, and four years in Afghanistan, a little bit of time in Iraq, and some time in Africa. It was all in the duty of protecting United States citizens that were downrange as well. And I, I feel very strongly about the Second Amendment, and the fact that it's a constitutional right, it's, it's out of the United States Constitution. It's not about hunting, it's not about self-defense, it's not about any of the things that kind of, that are getting brought up by political parties, Republican or Democrat, either way. It's about an inalienable right, it shall not be infringed upon, in, in a state constitution, I don't think trumps the, the United States Constitution in that, in that regard. I applaud you for writing the resolution and joining the rest of the, the, the state of Virginia in large part, in supporting our rights as citizens, not to be infringed, not to be able to confiscate, not to be able to alter or change the ability to own whatever we want to own. We, we fought, I fought for liberty and freedom, for every citizen of the United States, Democrat or Republican. For me, it's not a political issue, and I don't like when, when, when the United States Constitutions get used for political means, which is what I think it is. So I applaud that, I wish you would write a stronger resolution to join some of the counties in suggesting, don't come to our county trying to take weapons from our citizens, because all of you there are, are voted there by the citizenry. I'm glad you're listening to everybody, because I think both sides need to be addressed, and, and we need to talk more, and this kind of community is the place we can do that. The sheriff knows, knows everybody in the county. You guys know most of the people in your constituency, and I believe that in, so, in, in this whole process, you've talked to many of them on both sides. I think it was advertised correctly, and run, just like you run everything else, with, with the right kind of approach, in, in being the Board of Supervisor of Orange County. And I, I appreciate that.
Your time, your time is up.
Oh, was that my bell? I'm not as eloquent as Doc is, or anybody else, but again, I appreciate your, your writing the resolution, and, and voting for the rights of citizens of Orange County within the United States of America. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ronald Madalavich.
I hope you can hear me, my voice is a little rough, but I just wanted to thank you very much for supporting the Second Amendment resolution, and standing up to mob rule, because Northern Virginia represents a very, very small portion of this great state of ours. I've lived here, God willing, in a few months, for sixty-two years, and the vast majority of our state is on our side, so thank you.
Next speaker is M.K. Murphy.
I want to apologize a little bit, I've got some bronchitis, so I have a little difficulty talking here, but I want to thank you all for what you did last week. My name is Michael Kevin Murphy, I own Danton Farm, twenty-six four thirty Tatum Road, Unionville, Virginia. And my father, Judge Murphy, bought Danton Farm back in the early nineteen seventies, he died. My mom was on the farm, and, and I retired from a business in North Carolina to come here. Then I went to law school, and I have a law firm up in Fairfax. I commute every day, well, four days a week anyway. I'm seventy-eight years old now, so I'm entitled to a day or two off. So, so I commute up to Fairfax where I have my law firm, and I have some lawyers up there that work for me. I've looked at all these prefiled bills, in my judgment, and I've looked at them pretty carefully. In my judgment, they're unconstitutional, they, they will not survive careful constitutional scrutiny. There's a couple of federal courts, not just in Virginia, I wish it were in Virginia, but outside Virginia, that have struck down some serial provisions from that anyway. It's just going to take some time. Politics is one of those strange things, it, it went along in Virginia for years just fine. It was basically conservative, and whether you were a D or an R, you were not many degrees from center. And basically, the, the state ran along pretty well. We weren't subject to judicial scandals, and we weren't subject to, to union problems, and all the other things that are, that are endemic to some of the other states. Virginia has done damn well, as this gentleman said before here, a minute ago, people As this gentleman said before here, a minute ago, people are coming to Virginia because they see Virginia as something like a last refuge. If you look around at what's happening in this country between the left and the right, there's been something of a sea change over the last couple of years. What's happening now is that people all over the United States look at Virginia, Montana, one or two other states. That's sort of a last place to come to go. This isn't a place to come to be afraid. This is a come to place to be safe. Little, little personal story. I graduated from the Virginia Military Institute in nineteen sixty-four. Got commissioned, went to Vietnam, uh, commanded a rifle company over there. Led a combined US Army and South Vietnamese Ranger detachment. Hate to admit this on the record, but we were across the Cambodian border probably two or three dozen times in nineteen sixty-eight. I've seen something of death and I've seen something of what weapons will do. And I've seen how people will save themselves and preserve themselves to the things that are important to them by an acknowledgement of what weapons will do and, and the proper role of weapons in society. In seventeen, I think seventeen seventy-four, it was Tom Paine, I think it was in Thomas in, in Common Sense, but he said, these are the times that dry men's souls. And it was true. There was a provision right there. It was called the Gun Co- the Gun Control Program from Parliament. And it followed the Townsend Acts, the Intolerable Acts and whatever. The, the Gun Control Act, it was in two stages. The first stage was to make unlawful in the colonies, the manufacture of powder and ball and repair parts for weapons. And that was about six to eight months. And that wasn't good enough. So then Parliament decided, well, okay, we've got to ratchet this thing up. Anybody sound familiar with that? Ratchet this thing up? And then the full gun control program came in and it barred the importation of the manufacture of arms in the colonies. And within weeks, Lexington and Concord. The Second Amendment of the United States, to our constitution, George Mason put it in. He insisted on it and it was adopted. And it was for good reason. We had every reason to believe that whatever government comes to control us, to sit in judgment, whether we call them our representatives or not, we can't give them the power to take our lives away, either through a standing army or from prohibiting us to keep weapons. That was the whole idea of the Second Amendment. It had nothing to do with shooting. Everybody had guns. The whole idea of the Second Amendment was to preserve to each and every American the right to maintain arms as a safeguard against any government from its overweening power over us. That was it. Bottom line. Had nothing to do with hunting. What's happening in Richmond right now is something of a sea change, a hopefully sea change.
Your, your, your time is up. Go ahead, finish your sentence.
I appreciate your time.
Next speaker is Steve Colvin. Steve Colvin.
Steve Colvin, two thousand S.P. Road, Barbersville, Virginia. I just want to thank you guys. Y'all doing a great job. I'm going to give you more credit than the left does tonight because I think you're smart enough to know your own constituency. I think you made a decision based on what your constituents would want, not your personal choice. I believe that in my heart. I thank you all for that. Would I like it stronger? When I left that building, I felt like I did. After I read your letter, I was extremely happy. And I want to thank each and every one of you. Mr. Frame, you didn't go along with us, but I felt like you represented your constituency. I will always commend you on that. Also too, you seen our movement. It was our movement, Orange County's movement. I'm going to call it Orange County militia, if you will. That was our people, our numbers, and not all of them. Please do not fall for any amendments tonight. This is just the typical left-wing bureaucratic crap. It does not suit Orange County. We are in a circle of a lot of sanctuary counties. And we want to remain that way. I just want to thank y'all for that. There is no poll anywhere in Orange County that says eighty percent of us suppo- seventy percent of us, or eighty percent, would support the radical left-wing gun control agenda. Also too, you know, we talk about what's coming through from Richmond, from Northern Virginia, from Bloomberg, you know, he announced his presidency right here in Richmond. Northam owes him everything from setting through a blackface scandal. It's important that us out here in the county hold our ground and do the right thing for our constituents. Count my daughter, I've been here for five generations. I've shot, hunted, trapped, done what I wanted to do with the people's permission and ain't had no whole lot of trouble with the law and don't expect to. And that's the way we want to keep on living. This is our right. It's our county. You, you represented the majority, no matter what any of these people say here today. People are coming to, for Orange. They will continue to come to Orange because we got an amazing county. Blessed with amazing folks. Y'all are doing an amazing job. And it's about thirty people out there. We brought a light load tonight. If we need to come back, you're going to have to get a way bigger venue. God bless y'all. Thank you.
Next speaker, Barbara Drinkwater. Eleven, two thirty-two Cedar Hill Road.
Right. Do you want me to say that again or?
No ma'am.
That's okay.
I moved here forty-two years ago and I'm in Mark Johnson's district. And I happen to be a lifelong Democrat. However, I don't want to take away people's guns. Not responsible people. But what you need to know is there are two percent who affect probably twenty percent of the people in our society who are going to take those guns, make them automatic weapons and kill people. What I see in our county is a lack of mental health facilities. You used to have them when I first moved here. My husband Charlie had an arsenal. And he had a cancerous tumor on the decision-making part of the brain. But you had a mental health clinic here. And we went there. And guess what? They gave him three months to live with the cancer. But in that mental health clinic, there was a man there named Leonard Touchner who actually did guided imagery and music with him. And what did he visualize? Civil War soldiers going through his veins, through his bloodstream. And he went into spontaneous remission. That was a wonderful thing we had here, that mental health clinic. Guess what? We don't have it now. And we also don't have a homeless shelter. And I have a, we have a ministry in this county called Feed My Sheep. Last night I got a call. There was a fellow who had no place to go. He was trying to get to the bus station in Charlottesville, but he was too tired, couldn't make it. Finally, he went to one of the local churches. They gave him a room at the Best Western at Zion's Crossroads, was just going to get him closer. But all this talk about gun safety, very important. But the most important thing is people. And you represent them. And thank you for listening to everyone. Please do something about it.
Next speaker is Virginia Rockwell, forty-two, forty-seven Ridge Road.
I want to thank you all very much. I'm a constituent of Mark Johnson. I live in Barbersville. Most important thing I have to say to you all is that words matter. Facts matter. Speed matters, but time to slow down matters even more. History matters, civility matters. Your neighbors matter. And your constitution matters. And finally, on both sides, fear matters a great deal, probably more than anything else. What happens to the human brain when fear occupies it is very important to our public health and to our commonwealth. Now, my family raises and eats meat. So I'm very happy and very grateful to the hunters who do everything they can to manage habitat, wildlife population and keep us fed. But let me go back to my first point. Words matter as sanctuary is defined as a place of refuge or safety or protection, a consecrated place, the holiest of holies or more, most sacred part of a place of worship. And therefore, I respectfully request that this Board of Supervisors remove altogether this particular word sanctuary from all resolutions and all debate on the topic of gun safety and gun ownership. Now, to lighten up a little bit, I'm going to give you all a playlist and a reading list. And quite frankly, this conversation needs to include a lot more young people. Everybody in the community old enough to put on their earbuds, download a podcast and read. I want you to listen to the podcast. You're going to love this. Dolly Parton's America. And I want you to listen to the episode with that name and with a second one called Dolitix. And for data, I want you to get out your phone and use the dictionary to look up the word sanctuary. And look up a data summary site called USAfax.org. That's nonprofit, nonpartisan. And put some facts for the United States and Virginia on the table in a way that we can all understand. But the facts about mental health and guns really matter. The rate of accidents, suicides, homicides and death by legal intervention, that's the term, in our country have risen sharply over the last eight to ten years. And suicides are running at twice the rate of homicides.
It's your timer, sir.
Thank you. I want to call on you to continue this conversation. Don't end it. Don't terminate it. Don't rush to judgment. I want you to convene continuing conversations on this topic by public health, medical professionals, constitutional experts, neighbors, educators, mental health protect- professionals, and anybody who can reason, listen and speak from facts. And I call on you to eliminate the use of the word sanctuary altogether from any discussion of the guns. Guns are things. They don't need a place of refuge and protection. People and our children do.
Next speaker is Catherine Young. Catherine Young. Thirty-two, five fifty-one Indian Town Road.
Good evening. How are you? I know you're tired and want to go home. I'm here to talk about for, um, two A sanctuary. And I thank you very much for your vote last, um, month. I hear a lot of people saying, you know, the sanctuary, the two A sanctuary, it's bad, it's this or it's that. However, today, right now, the same laws, the same restrictions that we have on guns, they're not afraid of that today. We're talking about if something happens where somebody tries to infringe upon our rights next month. We're asking for you to secure that. Nobody's afraid today. Everyone in this room has said, well, this is bad and that is bad. But you're not afraid today. So why with being a sanctuary city for, um, section amet- sec- um, Second Amendment, is it going to change next month just because you say, yes, you can still have your rights? Yes, you do not have to follow an unconstitutional order. That's all we're asking. Nobody's afraid today. There is no fear mongering. We're fine today. There is open carry. There has been open carry in the state forever. Nobody's running around with their hair on fire. So just because you're saying, putting a name to it in case someone comes in who has promised to, um, come in and put restrictions on us, that's no reason to start running around screaming, uh, this is all wrong, this is all wrong. It's no different today than it will be January twentieth if we keep the sanctuary, Second Amendment sanctuary county. Another thing that I do want to bring up is this, and I want you to seriously think about it. There are three sanctuary cities in this state for illegal immigration. In March, the Republican Party put up a bill that would enable the police departments to do their jobs, to follow the laws, to work with the federal, um, enforcement officers. Our governor vetoed that bill, which prevents the police department from following the rule of the law. However, he is now, because we want sanctuary, Second Amendment, um, locate, lo- locations throughout the state, warning us that he will give us consequences, warning that he will cut our police departments off. Why? This is what I want you to think about. If it is for the protection of us as citizens in this state, why is he not enforcing the laws in these other sanctuary states, uh, cities, localities? But yet he wants to enforce and hold consequence to this. That's total hypocrisy. And it there, in that itself shows that there's something more to this other than I want to make the place safer. If he wanted to make it safer with any political law enforcement agency, there are laws in the books today and there are thousands of people in this state alone that are killed by illegal guns. If you cannot enforce the laws that you have on the books, why are you threatening legally, legal citizens who have never committed a crime with a gun? It's, it's hypocrisy, which leads to the fear mongering. Because if you look at it step by step in a timeline, you can see that there's a process. I pray that all of you uphold our rights. And you grant us, keep us in the sanctuary until other things can be worked out at the higher level. Once you take one thing away, it's just a slow process of taking it all away. And we all know this. I understand their fears. Do not get me wrong. I'm a mother. I teach in the schools. I understand that. However, I'm not afraid today to go to the grocery store and have someone with an open carry. My husband carries every day. He's not carrying here. This is government building. But I'm not afraid to see it. That was a both for me. Oh, I'm so sorry. You all have a Merry Christmas and happy holidays. Thank you.
Last speaker. The last speaker is Raleigh Timmons, one-one-three-nine-eight Bridlewood Road.
Board. One-one-three-nine-eight Bridlewood Drive. My name is Raleigh Timmons. And I really appreciate what happened two weeks ago at the, uh, Prospect Heights Middle School Building, making us a san- second sanctuary city or county. Uh, I appreciate everybody's input. I think that's what we need for this county going forward. This is not about, for me, it's not about a Democrat, it's not about a, a, a Republican. This is about my rights and my rights as a firearm owner. I think they're being violated. I heard some comments today from some of the people about what's right, what I can have as far as a part. You know, I, I don't tell people, I don't in- infringe upon people's, what they buy for their cars or for their tractors or for their lawn mowers because that's my right. My right to build a gun is given to me by the federal government, by my constitution, by my Second Amendment. I heard some comments tonight that we organized by an outside group. Well, I will tell you, shame on the, some of these, the people in this building because they were organized by the same group. But the, not the same group, but the same way. We just outnumbered them. The people of Orange County spoke to you two weeks ago. We have a small crowd here tonight. I think there's just as many outside as there is inside. That ought to have some bearing on what's, what's going on here today. I heard s- uh, a comment that, uh, about being in a grocery store with, with someone, uh, open carrying. And I, I encourage that person and, and I will be for one. Take you, take you to the range, take you to shoot. Make you not scare that gun because everybody in this state is not a criminal. We don't own guns to kill people. We are good people here in Orange County. And, and what happened two weeks ago was the people en masse telling you what they wanted. This small group here tonight does not- This small group here tonight does not, I repeat, does not reflect on the people of Orange County. Thank you.
That was the last speaker?
Yes, sir. That was the last speaker.
Okay, we'll close, close the public hearing.
Comment, comment. Hearing.
Sorry, public comment. That completes our agenda. Move to a chair.
I, I'll just say, before we go any further, that I appreciate everyone who came out tonight and, um, on both sides of this issue and... I agree in varying amounts, I think everybody spoke truth. And, uh, there were some comments I didn't agree with, I won't go into that right now. Uh, but, um, I, I just want to thank everybody for coming out. Uh, it's, uh, uh, it's important for any legislative body to hear from their public and hear from, um, what their citizens, uh, feel about these things. Nothing ever, you know, no- nothing bad comes from hearing as many opinions as possible and getting as much input as possible. So, thank you all for coming out.
Also, I want to thank you, thank everybody that conducted themselves admirably tonight. I think the, these meetings, uh, while there's a, a lot of us, uh, they reflect well on the county and, uh, that, that's an important part of who we are. So, I thank you not only for being here and for your comments, but for your conduct. Thank you.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Now, let me, let me...
Okay. You want to hold your motion?
I'll hold my motion for a bit. No, I think people on both sides have been courteous. They've come out and expressed, uh, strong feelings about how they feel about these things. And, uh, and I appreciate that, uh, we can have this kind of dialogue in, in a place like this and still respect everybody. Thank you very much.
Now you want to...
No, I've, I've got one more.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
I, I wasn't going to say anything, but, uh, I, I received a call from a Green County constituent the other day to discuss the darn near riot that we had at the last, uh, public comment. Excuse me, sir? Apparently, there are rumors, started somewhere, I don't know where, but, uh, Green County, uh, was, people there were informed that, uh, the Orange County citizens were, like I said, just unruly and everything else. Um, and I just want to say, thank you for both tonight and the first night because I think they've... My time's up. No good in a time, we don't have time, but, uh, yeah, but...
Could you wrap it up, sir?
Yes, I will wrap it up. I just wanted to say that, uh, I do appreciate, uh, how everyone has acted both at this meeting and the previous meeting. And if you happen to talk to people from Green County, tell them that we're a little more civilized than they are. Thank you.
More civilized in Charlotte.
I have a motion.
Now you can have my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right.
All in favor, say aye.